Are we recording the study?
Yes.
We are.
So we've definitely got more than. Might start again. Everyone's, everyone's comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Right, well, apologies, we've had some technical issues, so we're gonna, we're gonna start the meeting. Start the meeting again, so we, we're completely transparent and it's all recorded and now it's in the open. Obviously, unfortunately, we haven't had any live stream, but we will, we will go back and, and this will be posted after the meeting, so we, we have a recording of our, our first session. I'd just like to start with councillor Baker, if we could repeat that.
The whole thing, take care.
Yeah.
So we've already done Karakia, but it wasn't recorded, so as Mahi said for transparency sake, we'll, we'll do that again, so that way, you know, the good, the good thoughts and things that we address in this Karakia, flow on to you that are watching as well.
Thank you councillor Baker, and now we'd like to call for any apologies. Thank you councillor Baker, I'd now like to call for any apologies.
Thank you, worship, there is, there is one apology from councillor Mekari Sydney, and this report contained within the agenda to that effect also.
Can we call for a mover to accept the apology? If you can, councillor Crowder, and your second.
Yes, I'll second that.
All in favour? Those against? No, thank you, I carry the apology. We don't have a public forum booked, and we have no late items to bring into the council. At this stage, there's no confidential business to be transferred into the open. The change, there's no change in the order of business, unless there's one busy, change in the order. I'd like to confirm, confirmation of the minutes of the inaugural council meeting held on the 2nd of August 2024. Is there any corrections to the minutes? I therefore recommend that the minutes of the inaugural council meeting held on the 2nd of August 2024 be confirmed as true and correct. Yeah, thank you councillor Morris, second.
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Kurak. Do we have a declaration of any conflicts of interest? Have no deputations, presentations or petitions. And there is no recommendations from other committees as they have yet to be formed. But the first order of business I'd like to consider is 11.1, a leave of absence, prepared by Marty Greenfield and Coral Hair. Is there any questions, we take that as tabled, any questions around that report? Therefore, I call for a mover to accept that report. Thank you councillor Baker, and a second.
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you councillor Roseboom. The recommendation is the council receives the report leave of absence, improves a leave of absence to councillor Mekari Sydney for the period 15th of August 2024 to the 31st of December 2024. And the council extends their best wishes for a speedy recovery to councillor Mekari Sydney. All those in favour? Those against? No? I declare that motion carried. The second report we'd like to consider is 11.2, the delegation to the chief executive over election interim period, prepared by Marty Greenfield, have we got any questions on that report? Therefore, I call for a mover. Thank you councillor Kurak, and a second, if you need councillor Schuler. I therefore put the motion that the council receives the report as read, and the delegation to the chief executive over election interim period, all those in favour? Aye. Those against? No. I declare that motion carried. We now move on to 11.3, governance structure and appointments, 2024 to 2028. This was a report prepared by myself. I'm tabling a few updated documents. Firstly, a list of committee membership chairpersons and deputy chairpersons, which will update resolutions D, E and F. I also propose a couple of scope and role changes within, within those committees, and, and one name change, and also table the updated calendar till the end of the year of meetings for those committees. So I'd like to start with the governance structure and appointments. And the first committee, the Vision and Growth and Environment Committee, that I propose a slight name change from the, from the documents from vision, planning and growth. This is to be chaired by Martin Roseboom, with a deputy chairperson of Glen Crowder. And the members is deputy mayor Jen Schuler, councillor Haltapu Baker, councillor Rip Kurak, councillor Steve Morris, councillor Kevin Schuler, councillor Mekari Sydney, councillor Rob Taylor, with mayor Mahi Drysdale, also a member of that group. The next committee is the Project Planning and Monitoring Committee, with chairperson councillor Rod Taylor, deputy chairperson councillor Rip Kurak, members deputy mayor Jen Schuler, councillor Haltapu Baker, councillor Glen Crowthers, councillor Steve Morris, councillor Martin Roseboom, councillor Kevin Schuler, and councillor Mekari Sydney, again with mayor Mahi Drysdale as ex officio member. The Community Transparency and Engagement Committee, chairperson councillor Kevin Schuler, deputy chairperson councillor Haltapu Baker, members councillor Rip Kurak, councillor Steve Morris, councillor Rob Taylor, and mayor Mahi Drysdale. The Account, Billings, Performance and Finance Committee, chairperson deputy mayor Jen Schuler, deputy chairperson Mekari Sydney, with mayor Mahi Drysdale stepping in during Mekari's leave of absence, with members councillor Glen Crowthers, councillor Martin Roseboom, councillor Rip Kurak, and myself, once, once I skip out from the deputy chairperson. The Order and Risk Committees is to be chaired independently, yet to be appointed, with a deputy chairperson councillor Steve Morris, with members deputy mayor Jen Schuler and mayor Mahi Drysdale as an ex officio capacity. The Tanga Tepenua Taronga City Council Committee, to join the existing members, it's chaired by an external Mr Anthony Fisher, deputy chairperson to be confirmed, and members is mayor Mahi Drysdale, deputy mayor Jen Schuler, councillor Haltapu Baker, councillor Kevin Schuler, councillor Mekari Sydney, with Rob Taylor stepping in during the leave of absence. The Wastewater Management Review Committee has yet to have a chairperson appointed, following the recommendations by the committee, as, as well as the deputy chairpersons, but members of, of that committee will be councillor Rip Kurak, councillor Kevin Schuler, councillor Mekari Sydney, and during his leave of absence councillor Martin Roseboom, with councillor Rog Taylor also on that, that committee. They will also join the, the existing members of, of that committee. The Regulatory Hearing Panels continues with, with the same members as was on it, likewise with the District Licensing Committee. The, under E, the, the joint committees and compares the membership as follows, these are the, the changes. So the Smart Growth Leadership Group is mayor Mahi Drysdale, deputy mayor Jen Schuler, councillor Martin Roseboom, and alternate councillor Glen Crowthers. The Bay of Plenty Civil Defence Emergency Management Group is, is mayor Mahi Drysdale, with the alternates being councillor Kevin Schuler and deputy mayor Jen Schuler. The Regional Transport Committee is, is mayor Mahi Drysdale, with alternate mayor Jen Schuler. And the Public Transport Committees is councillor Glen Crowthers, councillors Rob Taylor, and alternate councillor Rip Kurak. The Public Transport Joint Committee is councillor Glen Crowther and councillor Rip Kurak, with the alternate councillor Rob Taylor. Timaru Okaituna River Authority councillor Steve Morris, with the alternate being Mekari Sydney and Rip Kurak stepping in during the leave of absence as their alternate. And also the, the next part of some advisory boards, and some external organisations and internal working groups, so just to go through the, the membership of these committees. Deputy Mayor Jen Schuler, councillor Haltapu Baker, councillor Rob Taylor, and councillor Mekari Sydney, with councillor Rip Kurak stepping in there while Mekari is away. The Waari Kaitaki Advisory Group, councillor Haltapu Baker, councillor Steve Morris, with the alternate being councillor Mekari Sydney, with Rob Taylor taking up that alternate place while Mekari is away. The Mata Pii Southern Pipeline Advisory Group, deputy mayor Jen Schuler, councillor Rip Kurak, councillor Martin Roseboom, and councillor Kevin Schuler. The Tama Kapaui Governance Group, with councillor Haltapu Baker, councillor Rob Taylor, and the alternate councillor Kevin Schuler. The Taronga Moana Advisory Group, has members councillor Haltapu Baker, councillor Mekari Sydney, and during his leave of absence councillor Kevin Schuler, and the alternate, once, once Mekari is back, will be councillor Kevin Schuler. The Mount Air Quality Working Group, mayor Mahi Drysdale with councillor Rob Taylor, and the alternate deputy mayor Jen Schuler. Local Government New Zealand Zone Two representative is mayor Mahi Drysdale, with alternate deputy mayor Jen Schuler. So that's, that's the first list. A little bit, a little bit of a mouthful. I'd just like to, to go through a little bit around some of the, the proposed changes to, to the scope, and, and some of those, those roles. And, you know, I, I'd like to talk a little bit about the, the reasoning behind these. Is, you know, what these committees produce, I guess, is, is a working body to, to achieve some of the, the council's important objectives. And, and some of the things that we see that there is an opportunity to, to improve in, in this, the city. So that's sort of where it came from, and as part of that, yeah, I think we, we had some, some feedback in, in this, that we had missed, missed that environment piece and, and understanding that that was an important part of, of what we were trying to achieve, and therefore that is the, the reason that that committee has, has had a, a name change from vision, planning and growth, to vision, growth and environment, taking, taking into account. There is, yeah, one, one key role, proposed change, which is to work with all key partners to enhance, protect and restore when necessary the wellbeing of our natural environment and harbour, to ensure the people of Taronga can thrive and enjoy the lifestyle the city provides. In, in project planning and monitoring, there is a, a small change in, in the role, just, just to, I think, rather than saying good outcomes, it, it now is proposed to say good social, economic and environmental outcomes, including value for money. And in the Community Transparency and Engagement Committee, there's an additional role there to review and improve public confidence and participation in council decision-making processes, and in the scope to assess options for improving public participation in decision-making and make recommendations to council that will strengthen democratic processes at all levels of the organisation. So that is the, the proposed changes there, and the third document, which has been updated there, is, is the, the proposed calendar for the year, to try to, to juggle commitments and, and make it, make it available to as many people as, as we, as we can get to, to all those important committees as we, as we start this council, and hopefully then start on, on the, the track that we, we wish to, to take. So obviously, that was a, a lot of talking from myself, but I would, I'd be keen to, to take any, any questions that, that people may have on, on any of those table documents, or, or anything else in, in that report. Councillor Morris.
Thank you, thank you mayor Mahi, in regard to the regulatory hearings panel, I have a couple of questions. Is that for an appointment through to 2028? If so, have the members been consulted on it being through to 2028? I understand there's some business presently before the committee that requires the committee to continue, but I say that.
Thank you for your, your question. Look, I, I think with, with all of these committees, there is all, they're always subject to change, and, you know, very much, I, I think what has been agreed around the, the council table is we're, we're around performance, and, and we want to start delivering, so there, there is no set timeframe for, for those appointments, and, and, you know, we can and, and will change as, as required as, as we go forward, as we hopefully, you know, achieve what, what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, one question around the vision and growth committee, why did we remove planning on that? As far as I'm concerned, vision and growth does involve planning, so why has the planning been moved?
No, that's a, a good question. So, yeah, that was, that was from feedback, the, the planning, I guess, was something that, was, was, and you're exactly right, it is, you know, in, in vision and growth, you have to have planning. So it was kind of assumed that that was, that was part of, of that committee, without needing it in, in the name, and, you know, partly the, the environment piece was that we do, we do need to, to take the environment into account in, in going forward.
So can we just add both in, leave planning and environment in the title?
I'd be, be open to, to hear feedback around that. Yeah, councillor Crowthers?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to support an amendment along those lines. For, I mean, in my view, the issue with Taronga, from public perception, is that we focus a lot on growth and not a lot on planning, that's the perception, I'm not saying that's, that's what's intended. Start, done an awful lot of work on planning, but I think it would be much more helpful to have planning in there and call it vision, planning and environment, and the other way around. And if all the words there, if we want to, if we want to explicitly put growth there, but I mean, we're dealing with growth, whether the word's there or not, I think the issue from my perspective is, what is our role? Our role is to plan, and it's the primary purpose, I would think, and then presumably have a vision and we manage growth and we support the environment, and that probably certainly great, there was, I would say.
Is there any other questions on that?
Yeah, just one question with regard to the addition to the scope, fine with the wording, but the word restore, if we're planning for growth, restore is a bit of a handbrake, growth? Fine with the rest of it, if we just remove the word restore?
We've restored a beach down on Chapel Street, so it does say where appropriate, so, but without any reason why you would have that in.
Yeah, my, my reason is, we're the beginning of the planning for Taronga's future. So we're the vision, planning for growth, mindful of the environment, the effects, everything that we do will have on Taronga. We can debate the issues around the effect that it's going to have on Taronga as we go through this. So while we're doing the visionary part, why are we talking about restoring when we're planning for the future? I find the world could be a bit of a handbrake on discussions, or used by people just, in the conversation around, we're trying to have about promoting Taronga into the future.
Yeah, no, thank you councillor Roseboom, I, I agree with some of your, your thoughts, I guess my, my one reservation is if we can, you know, in, in planning and, and vision, if we can restore when appropriate, if that sort of becomes a, something that we can do, I, I think it is a, it is an advantage. You know, but I'm, I'm also happy to hear any, councillor Baker.
Sure, so that was one of my recommendations, and part of the rationale for being intentional about using the word restore, particularly when it comes to our harbour ecosystem, that there are, you know, with the impacts of climate change, sediment, the impact of sediment, coastal erosion etcetera, there's a whole bunch of impact that happens with our harbour's ecosystem. So as we continue to grow, I think it's important and necessary that we place equal emphasis on restoring, and hence the words necessary, because I don't want the restoration of our environment to halt inevitable growth. But I, I do think we have a serious responsibility to ensure that we're necessary as the state, and we play our role to ensure that our harbour's ecosystem is in a state of wellbeing, which means those that live well within that space as well. And there's scope within the work that we do to ensure that we restore the wellbeing of our harbour's ecosystem, so that way our kids can get to learn and play in that, in that space. To my concern is if we don't have measures like restoration and scope, or in role, then that'll become a, that'll be the thing that's compromised first for the sake of growth. It's a part of the rationale to, to that, so absolutely, it's not, let's stop growth, but if we, if there's opportunities for us to store, restore components of our harbour's ecosystem, we should do that.
No, thanks, Haltapu, it's fine, I agree, but I believe there's already enough chief government acts governing what we can do on and about the harbour already, that we're going to run, have issues with going forward anyway, so, fine, we accept it, but we'll work with it, but I think there's already enough legislation governing what we do with the marine harbour already, that we're going to work with.
All right, thank you councillor Roseboom, have we got any other?
So I do support the, the re-inciting of planning, I just thought it would become a, pretty much a paragraph of a committee statement if we added everything, but I understand the points, and I wouldn't be opposed to the addition of having planning as well.
Yeah. Is, is there, oh, sorry, is there any other questions?
I was just going to add, in terms of comment, the, to me, the words we're necessary are not necessary. I understand why councillors might see that as being potentially conflicting with current government's growth agenda, but I think that it seems to me like it's just self, you know, self-evident that we need to protect our natural environment in the long run. And so just got the counter, the counter view, I think, you know, I'd be happy to, not even have the we're necessary in brackets, but I think to not have that statement would be, you know, potentially have severe implications for the people living here and future generations, and that, so just sort of putting that alongside the other things.
All right, well, I think, I think it's fairly well agreed that we, we propose that we, we change that committee to, to vision, planning, growth and environment. That's accepted, and I think after that discussion, quite comfortable keeping that wording as is, and as so we can refine these if required going forward, but I think, you know, and I, I think really the, the clear thing around this is, is actually just, just working towards that lifestyle the city provides. I think that is a, you know, I think people come here because of, of the environment and, and what the natural beauty and, and the, what this, this place has to offer, so that is an important, an important part. the natural beauty and, and the, what this, this place has to offer. So uh, that is a, an important, um, an important part. Um, so therefore, um, I move.
Sorry, I was.
Oh, sorry.
But just therefore under role, we just need to update the name again, just for correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Apologies. So, yeah, those, that name will go through uh any of the, the appropriate documents. And there's probably a few other places that, that needs to be updated. So we'll, we'll take that as, as uh being updated. Um, therefore, I, I move the recommendation. Um, and, and thank you for, for the feedback. Um, and I, I call for a second.
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, um councillor Roseboom. Um, so I recommend um that the council receives the report Governance Structure and Appointments, uh, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight. Acknowledge um that the mayor has exercised his power under section forty one A, um brackets three, uh B and C of the local government Act twenty, uh two thousand and two to establish standing committees and special committees of a council and appoint committee chairpersons. Uh, adopt the terms of reference for and make the delegations, the standing committees and special committees as attached in amended attachment one. Um, obviously, we've, uh, we've read through all the, the different uh committees and, and chairs. Uh, so all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oh, was there a debate?
Oh, yeah, if you'd like, uh, I've got an opportunity, so, yeah, for some further discussions. Yep.
Uh, yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Mia. And I just, even in um, in debate, we'd just like to signal that at the appropriate time, it's a regulatory hearings panel has concluded, the business can't be before it. My personal view would be that it's time to review that panel. Uh, and also, as a friendly reminder, when there are questions, a question mark at the end of a statement does not a question make. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, is there any, any other um debates or discussions around?
Sorry, no, just for clarity, how we had that discussion before the moving of the motion, do we save that for this point? Not like how we did just before and then around the restoration, for example?
Yeah, probably. I think, yeah, I think we, we have questions on it and then, and then have any discussions. So kind of moulded those into, into one. Um, is there any other? The other debate? Questions? All right, uh, in that case, um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those against? Um, I declare that motion carried. Now we get into the um, the fun stuff. Remove remuneration uh for elected members, eleven point four. Um, so uh, I'd just, just like to, to briefly um uh talk to this. Uh, this is, has been in, in discussions uh with, with councillors. Um, but we are a team of ten. Um, and everyone wants to work and contribute. And therefore, uh, it was agreed that, that uh we should look at a, a fairly flat structure uh for remuneration. Um, so I have, have updated um the, the remuneration spreadsheet um to reflect the, the governance structure adopted. Um, we've just adopted. And um, obviously, we've, we've got a, a proposed uh remuneration for, for councillors um that is, has been tabled to you all. Uh, so the remuneration um proposal is uh that we, we have a, a minimum um uh increasing the statutory minimum to, to a hundred and, and ten thousand uh for councillors uh with the, the deputy uh mayor um getting a uh forty five thousand dollar um additional remuneration. Uh, and then chairs of standing committees and chairs of deputy standing committees uh both getting uh twenty five thousand nine hundred, uh which is a, um, you know, makes a, a fairly flat structure with uh the, the eight councillors being paid the same and, and uh the deputy mayor having an increase uh to account for the, the additional workload in that. Um, have we got any questions on, on that proposal or the, or the report? Yes, uh, sorry, councillor Curran?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Mai. Um, just on that, and just to make it a bit clearer in terms of the hundred and ten for councillors with no additional responsibilities. Um, so it's given that um we are bound by statute to um follow its determination of the authority, the remuneration authority. And we have eighty seven, six, nine, five is the default standard um remuneration that all councillors as will get as a minimum. So just if we can explain a little about how we arrive at the hundred and ten. I think um perhaps members of the public reading through the agenda and just attachment, I assume will be posted on, on the website. Um, now that was the right that, because I understand that's sort of a climate through statute. Have we achieved that, given the, um, the extended length of absence? Is that what it was about?
Um, so the, the, the eighty seven is, is a minimum. Um, and that, that can't be below. But uh councils have the ability to set that minimum at, at whatever levels. And I guess, um, the, you know, the, the rationale behind that is, is sort of a, a twenty six thousand um dollar increase for, for the work you do. Um, you know, being on standing committees is a, a fairer reflection. Um, you know, of, of that additional work than, uh, you know, we could set that at eighty seven thousand. Um, but then, you know, it's a, it's a uh about fifty thousand dollar increase um to, to be on committees. So, you know, it, it, the, the hundred and ten thousand really is an arbitrary figure in, in a, a lot of ways. Um, but it, yeah, I, I think it, it better reflects that, that sort of schedule. If you were just on council and, and not on with any other duties, um, then, you know, I think that's a, a fair number. But again, we could, we could change that if, if that's required.
But because I'm anticipating uh the public, um, given that we have a member that's not on job, would think that, okay, we've got a, a statutory minimum of the eighty seven, six, nine, five. And so basically we're allowing that member that's not on job an additional to the minimum that's in statute. I'm just thinking about, you know, the potential there for the discomfort. Hmm, that's.
Yeah, sorry councillor.
I'm happy to speak to that. I, I support the, the way this is, um, has been done. And I support the differentiation of a councillor without chair or deputy chair respectabilities in terms of a, our councillor, Makari Sidney, who is on sick leave currently. I don't believe that would be a cause for concern. Um, if you are the hundred and ten is part of an equation we have to make, we've got an amount that has to be shared. Uh, and so I support the fact that a councillor on sick leave is, is getting an amount that's higher than a statutory minimum.
Yeah, councillor Morris.
Uh, question, Mia and Mai, for the public's benefit, uh, does the council have to fully use the remuneration pool?
Um, yes, thank you councillor Morris. Uh, yes, the, there's a, a, a full pool of uh one point two four million. Um, and that must be, that must be used uh to, to pay uh all the councillors. So um whatever the calculation is, uh, that, the, the sum has to add to, to that figure. Um, and that's uh under the, the statutes um applying, so.
Excuse me. Um, yeah, I'm wondering, um, what, what happens then to the other twenty five thousand nine hundred dollars? If someone is, is, has, does not have a deputy chair role or a chair role active at any point in time, that's in the pool. It has to be allocated. And I'm, I'm just, I, I guess the simplistic view to me, just to help you perhaps answer the question, is that I was kind of thinking if it was going to be a flat um distribution, apart from deputy mayor, that, that would be sort of like the councillor with no additional responsibilities would just have that because that's kind of a flat structure and therefore there'd be no reallocation needed. Um, the issue of sick leave to me is a bit of a special case. Um, but putting the sick leave aside, um, when you just look at having a, a councillor with no additional responsibilities, is that effectively saying that that extra uh, you know, money that's, that would be having to be allocated, that would be allocated equally between all the others or how's that work?
Yeah, so if, uh, uh, thank you, uh councillor Brother. Um, yes, um, if, if there was a, a, a member that, that went down to the, the uh hundred and ten thousand um with no um responsibilities, uh, that would, that money would be uh reallocated um between the, the, the members. So um, that's, that's very much what is dealt with in the, in this, in the statutes. Um, and, yeah, I think that this is, this is the way that um that the statute deals with these things, that, that you have a, a sort of a base plus. Um, and it, it's not some, not necessarily the, the easiest or, or uh most sensible um thing. And, and, you know, this is, I, I guess the, the issue with Makari Sidney is still a, a work in progress as to, to how that works under, under a, a level of absence. And um we'll, we'll have to work through that in the, in the term of months.
Follow up for clarification. It, I guess another way of wording my question is can the, can the base be a hundred and thirty five, nine hundred and a plus of a zero?
Um, I, yeah, I, I'd have to, uh, yeah, we have to go to, to staff probably, follow what's on.
Kilda, my name's Coral here. I'm the manager of top stage government. And so you can, um, I've been talking to a bit of remuneration authority people. Um, and what they are saying is, is that you can have, you can allocate it really how you like. But you do have to um give a description of what those additional responsibilities are and why you are paying for, for that. So it's, it's more of a question of you would then have to give, um, give a description and that they would be comfortable with. Because ultimately, they, they're the ones that make the final approval of it. Yes. So potentially you could, but um generally they would like to see what are the roles and additional responsibilities that you are remunerating for and for it to fit your governance structure.
And just, and just following on from that, I am very comfortable that as a chair and deputy chair, you are that is a significant additional responsibility and I support there being a differentiation for that. And whether we choose to or not, um, put our, um, be accepted as a chair or deputy chair, that is a responsibility we are taking on. And I like the fact that there was a differentiation and remuneration. So I support what's on the table.
Thank you, Coral. Um, have we got any more questions before we move, we can move on to a bit more discussion? Any more questions around the report? Um, therefore, also. Um, oh, um, oh, therefore, uh, move this motion. And uh, you know, just, just to reiterate, um, on that, uh, you know, this, this council, uh, you know, we are a, a team of ten. Uh, and, you know, therefore the, the remuneration uh does reflect that, um, that, that, uh, you know, it is, it is a flat uh remuneration. And everyone uh is, is paid the same, um, which I think is, is a, a very um good uh move forward by, by the councillors. Um, because uh, you know, we, we do all expect a lot of each other and, uh, and to have that, that performance um aspect of, of council. So um, I have, have moved the motion to we, we got a second of. Thank you, um councillor Baker. Uh, is there any further discussion on this?
Yeah, actually Brother. Yeah, um, I guess I, I'd like to propose the amendment to it because I, I guess I still, I, I can't see the logic of saying that it's flat. But building in a structure that means not only is it not flat blooded, um, but it would mean that the one hundred and thirty five, nine hundred be for chairs and deputy chairs would not be, uh, would not be one thirty five, nine hundred. If someone became one hundred and ten, it would be whatever that, and work out the number, whatever the number is higher than that. So um, I guess I, I see an advantage in, as you said, the team of ten, the, the, the idea of a flat structure to be reflected in the actual remuneration structure itself as opposed to um sort of just a, a discussion point around it.
Subject to getting approval of, of Glenn's idea, I, I completely agree. I think makes one hundred percent sense. And we are a team of ten. We've got a flat structure, is how we agreed to do it. This just seems a bit weird, but we're having to step up to, to get there.
No, no, um, councillor Baker's, uh, sorry councillor Baker's already seconded, seconded. Oh, sorry.
I mean that, yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, yeah, so, yeah, sorry, Glenn's, so you're, you're seconding Glenn's, Glenn's meeting. Um, okay, is, is there any more discussion on that?
Uh, nothing other than to add that, um, and for the public's sake, so that it's clear. This is, you know, Makari has an influence in this decision because he's been unable to. And that this has been a decision that we've made around this table because we believe in the idea that we are a team of ten. I'm sorry, there's no one that, that, um, you know, what he's receiving while he's technically out of commission um to fall negatively on him and his name considering he's been unable to debate, discuss, agree or disagree with the entire process. Um, but this is something that we've decided um as a council because we believe in the idea of a team of ten. We stick by each other, um, you know, under the principles and just decisions that we've made to operate. Um, and this is a reflection of what we've agreed to in order to be a high performing team of ten.
All right, so is, uh, does that finish our discussion? Yeah, um, all right, therefore, um, I put uh the amendment um forward uh that the, the basis is changed to a hundred and thirty five, nine hundred. Um, all those in favor? Aye? Those against? I'll go against, no. You're a, against the amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so is the, is there any, uh, so we're, so we're yeah, motion carried. So um, that has been amended to a hundred and the, the councillors with no responsibility will be um a hundred and thirty five, nine hundred. And then that will, um, will end up with the same figures. So, so we'll just have to uh adjust the additional remuneration for uh the deputy um mayor um to, to end up at those, those same figures. So, thank you. So, thank you. Oh, okay. Um, so, uh, the the recommendations that the council receives a report remuneration for elected members uh, allocates the the councillors' remuneration pool of one, uh, two, four, two, five, eight, one for submission to the remuneration, uh, as follows. Uh, so councillors with no res- um, responsibility, uh, one thirty five, nine hundred. Uh, the deputy, um, mayor position of responsibility is, uh, forty five thousand, uh, I'm sorry, is one hundred and fifty five thousand, three hundred and eighty one. Um, and the chairpersons, uh, deputy chairpersons and, um, other position of responsibility of one thirty five, uh, nine hundred. Um, so, uh, and all those in favor? Those against? No. Uh, I declare that motion carried. Uh, the next item is eleven point five, elected members expenses and resources policy. Um, have we got, uh, I I accept that as as read. Um, have we got any questions on that?
Yes, that's great. Um, yeah, um, Mayor Mahi, um, I'm wondering if if this if any thoughts have been minded in terms of reviewing that, because I guess in which, um, we probably haven't had a really, um, detailed look at, um, um, seeing where this sort of new, most of us are new to this. So I think, you know, it could be helpful to do this. I just wonder if you had any thoughts in terms of that.
Yeah, I think, uh, anything is is changeable. Um, so if if there's, uh, you know, if we get a couple of months down the track and and it's, uh, we need to amend it, um, then we we can look to do that and bring that back to to council.
But I just suggest we put a timeframe on that, that by next June, there's been a review of the expenses policy or by next sometime. It's probably said to put a timeline on that.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, that's, that's a good idea. And and let's, let's put that we, um, that we look, look into it, uh, probably at, uh, in our February meeting. Um, before our February meeting, uh, so we can, um, we've had, you know, four, four or five months, uh, under our belts and we can, we can, uh, make a good decision on that. So, thank you for that. Yeah. Um, so, um, I call for a mover for this. Yeah, uh, thank you, Councilor Morris. Um, and a second, uh, thank you, Councilor Shula. Um, any further discussion? Um, therefore, um, that the council receives the report elected members expenses and resources policy, adopts the Toronga City Council's elected members expenses and resource policy, uh, twenty twenty four, attachment one, to take effect immediately and see, um, that this is, uh, reviewed, uh, at the council meeting uh, in the the new year, uh, around February, depending on on the calendar. Um, all those in in favor, aye? Those against? All right, that motion is carried. Uh, the next, uh, item of business is, uh, eleven point six, appointment of the chair to the board of Tamanu Atakiyo Tapa Charitable Trust. Um, again, uh, I would like to, um, table that as as read. Um, is there any questions, uh, regard regarding that report? No questions. Um, therefore, I I call for a mover. Move, uh, Councilor, uh, Deputy Mayor, um, Jin Schooler. And a second, uh, uh, Councilor Taylor, thank you. Uh, is there any discussions on this? Therefore, I put the motion that council receives the report appointment of a chair to the board of Tamanu Atakiyo Tapa Charitable Trust appoints the Toronga City Council Mayor Mahi Drysdale or his nominee as the chair to the board of Tamanu Atakiyo Tapa Charitable Trust for his term of office effective immediately. And notes, in accordance with section eighty of the Local Government Act two thousand and two, that while the process for appointing the chair is inconsistent with council's appointment of directors to council, um, organisations policy, the extenuating circumstances of a Tamanu Atakiyo Tapa Trust trustee provides sufficient rationale for this inconsistency. There is no intention to amend the appointment policy to accommodate this particular decision. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carried. Um, the last, um, the last item is, um, is the meeting schedule August to December. Um, obviously, uh, we've we've got an amendment, um, that have been tabled, uh, for that. Um, and what I mean, has, um, has anyone got any, any questions, um, on it?
This is probably a simple logistical thing, but when it says five weekly on the committee, um, structure pages here, and then you sort of look on the calendar, it doesn't always hold that way. So sometimes it's was that just because of where holiday breaks the schedule or breaks, you know, recess?
Yeah, um, it it is. It's, it's been juggled, um, you know, to to sort of accommodate. So some of them are four, some of them are six. Um, and, you know, we're trying to get into that, uh, that sort of, uh, yeah, there's, there's a few things that that are, uh, sort of in in the way, I guess, of of those, that sort of thing. So that is absolutely intention. And as we go into the new year, hopefully, we can, uh, get that a little bit more set. All right, um. Therefore, um, I will move, um, that if we, we got a second. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, um, Schooler. Um, any discussions? Therefore, I will, uh, put the, put to council, um, that they receive a report meeting schedule August to December twenty twenty four, adopts the meeting schedule for the period August to December twenty four as set out in attachment one. Um, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those against? No. I declare that carried. Um, we have no later items to discuss. Um, we have no, um, public, uh, excluded sessions. Um, so I thank you all for for your time. Uh, and I'd like to hand back to, um, Councilor Baker to, uh, to give us a closing paragraph. All right, thank you, councillors. Um, it's, uh, it's been a good start and, uh, nice and efficient. So uh, I now de-declare the meeting closed at eleven, uh, sorry, ten forty one. Uh, thank you very much.
That's a matter of housekeeping. Um, so the attachments that, um, were tabled, they need to go on the, onto the website? Yes.
Yeah, right, yeah. So, yeah, uh, all those tabled items will be, um, up on the website very shortly.